Order please. Call or roll?
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Torino?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Ms. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is citizens comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to microphone, state your name and address. Also, be mindful that you have three minutes by which to answer your questions or make your inquiries. Also, you may not receive a response to a particular inquiry here this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments.
It's always getting that first one up, and then after that, the whole rush comes.
The agenda is still open for citizens comments.
I ain't going. You go. No, I ain't going. You go first.
You go first.
Sort of like when you ask for a motion.
You was here.
Last call, citizens comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, item five, action items. Item five, the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this evening, item A, approval of the June 16th, 2021 public hearing. Two, approval of the minutes of the June 16th, 2021 regular meeting. Three, approval of the minutes of the June 24th, 2021 special meeting. Four, approval of the minutes of July 13th, 2021 special meeting. And B, approval of bills for payment. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Second by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the agenda? Motion on the floor, and that's to approve the consent agenda approving four minutes and the approval of the bills for payments. Hearing or seeing none, call or roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Torino?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item six, election, selection, appointment, if you want to term it, for the position of Secretary of the Board. We have, Ms. Jarrett was the Board Secretary. She is no longer on the Board. Thus, we need to fill that position. So, I would like to nominate Mr. Monk for the position of Secretary.
I'll second Mr. Monk.
Are there any additional? Any additional names for position of Secretary? Third and last time?
Nominate Ms. O'Neal.
It's moved by Member Monk to nominate Member O'Neal.
You can separate your own nomination.
Technically, for a nomination, you don't need a second. But, you know, it doesn't hurt, but it's not technically required. Or you had to do, if you're nominated and you don't want it, you just say, nope, don't want it. Thank you, but no thank you.
No thank you.
I was gonna say that. You into it.
Look at her, she goes, yeah, fuck.
Really?
The agenda is still open for nominations for the position of Secretary. Hearing or seeing none, the chair would call for a vote for Member Monk as the Secretary. Call or roll, please.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Torino?
I'm also a yes.
I am so sorry. Yes, Ms. Torino.
You were more enthusiastic when you slipped that hundred dollars in my pocket.
You were alright, alright.
Then you realize what was going on, huh? I'll give it back.
See, that's why I told you, I'll give you about that.
You'll take your time, right?
Yeah, I'll take my time when I get here.
The motion carries. Mr. Monk is now the Board Secretary. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next, moving the agenda forward, next on the agenda, item seven, information coming out of the Policy Committee. Policy, there are several policies under A, Policies for First Reading Update, Volume Three, Number Two. Who's gonna take this? Mr. Monk, thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. I am submitting for the, from the Policy Committee, the following policies for second reading and adoption into our district-wide policy manuals. These policy revisions are based on changing-
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Alright, mine says first reading.
No, it's the second reading.
Okay. I believe I entered these for first reading at the last meeting.
Yeah, last, last meeting.
Okay, I got you, okay. No problem, no problem.
We'll just make a quick change.
Yeah. Amend the agenda.
So do we need to?
No, just, you know, correct the agenda, that's all.
Okay, alright.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
Alright, thank you, Mr. President. I am submitting from the Policy Committee, the following policies for second reading and adoption into our district-wide policy manuals. These policy revisions are based on changing public school law from a federal, state, and local guidance. The policies are, policy 2260.01, Section 504 ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability revised. Policy 2266, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities revised. Policy 7440.01, video surveillance and electronic monitoring revised. Policy 8321, criminal justice, oh. In front, I didn't see the baby over there. I'm like, what is that? Oh yeah, look, right at Jake, I'm like, okay.
I'm young, but not bad, yeah.
Yeah, you start, okay, Jay, you got you, okay.
You whining already.
Right, 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 right. I'm sorry, let me, back to policy three, 7440.01, video surveillance and electronic monitoring revised. Policy 8321, criminal justice information security, non-criminal justice agency revised. Policy 8330, student records revised. Policy 8400, school safety information revised. Policy 8500, food service revised. And policy 8510, wellness revised.
Are you putting that in form of a motion, sir?
Oh, I did.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, in the beginning, I said, I'm submitting these for second reading and adoption. Gotcha, my, my, my.
Alright, it's been moved by Mr. Monk. Chair would entertain a second.
Support.
Second, Mr. Torino. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motions on the floor? Mr. Monk started off stating that these are state-required revisions. Therefore, we have no input in terms of what's in the policies. We're mandated to adopt it because they are state-mandated. Call or roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Torino?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item eight, information coming from the Business and Finance Committees. A, was that a small business loan?
School bond loan fund.
That was called, School Bond Loan Fund Resolution. Mrs. Beals?
I'm gonna punt this one to Mrs. Potter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. This is the resolution which we discussed in the meeting last month, which will allow us to proceed formally with the refinance program to borrow sixteen million dollars, which will pay off in full the school bond loan fund and allow us to save approximately eight hundred thousand dollars over the next nine years. And we discussed this in detail last month. This is the formal resolution and the first step toward finalizing the sale of the bonds and receiving the proceeds so that we can follow through with our plan.
You've heard the recommendation, the chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker to approve the School Bond Loan Resolution.
Support.
Second, Member Monk. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? As Ms. Potter stated, we did discuss this at our last workshop, and it might have been brought to the Business and Finance Committee for any additional information. No questions, comments, or concerns, call or roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Torino?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item B, elevator replacement. You like that idea, huh? Mrs. Beals?
This is another one that I'm gonna ask Mrs. Potter to discuss. We are in desperate need of replacing the elevator here in this school.
The elevator repair was included in the budget presentation for 2021, and it will be utilizing S or two funds to make the repairs. The elevator in the building is the original elevator from when it was created, and so what we have, what we're facing is, as we make changes or we need to make repairs to the elevator, we need to bring it up to code. So this will allow us to not only upgrade the equipment so it stops breaking every other week, but also bring it up to code and make it completely accessible for anyone who needs the elevator to reach the second floor for educational purposes. We did put out an RFP for this service, and we had one bid. The bid was vetted by Partners in Architecture, our engineers and surveyors, and so they are completely confident that the company that bid on the project fully understood what we were requesting and that they bid it out correctly. However, these jobs are, we are being informed by every contractor that these jobs are sixteen to twenty weeks out before they can even begin. So this project will not start immediately, but we are asking that we approve the resolution to move forward with this project so we can get the appointment scheduled and not give up more valuable time.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to Agenda Item 8B, Elevator Replacement.
So move.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Second, Member McFadden. Any questions on the motions on the floor? I have a couple of questions, and they're coming from a place that you're saying the elevator is original equipment. So, it's not like just going in and replacing a runner or rudder. You gotta go in and upgrade everything and make everything-
Correct.
-up to current code. With that being the situation, I'm concerned about unknown conditions, unseen conditions. I don't know what was entailed in the walkthrough with the only getting one bidder for the replacement, that's Great Lake Elevator. I'm familiar with them, but I've never worked with them. But in terms of, was there any discussion about any unknown conditions? Because when you open an old building like this, you start working with original equipment, there are unknown situations because what's on the blueprint is on the blueprint, is not, maybe not what's in that vehicle, because you cut corners, you save money, and whatever. So was there any contingency on here for unknown conditions?
Yes, sir. During the RFP process, we did offer a walkthrough, and more than just one bidder attended that walkthrough. I think we had three companies show up. They were given a full inspection and visual of our current equipment. I believe we're replacing the entire shaft, getting a new car, getting all new electronic components and controls, so it is extensive. That is part of the reason we asked Partners in Architecture to vet the quote, to make sure that they were on track with what they saw, and there is a contingency of ten percent built in to that total price.
I'm not saying a contingency, what you set aside, and you hold on the side until the project is completed, I'm talking, is there time and material, or because, I'm just, if there are any unknown conditions, it's not the architect's fault because he didn't see it, because he didn't take that, you know, he looked at it, but he didn't take it apart. He's not trying to replace it.
Correct.
You know, if you take something apart, you know, the wall crumbles, and you gotta replace that or something, you know.
Right. When they, when they build in the contingency cost, that's kind of what they're setting aside for. So, the original bid from the company was actually for, I believe it was 146. The finalize that we're asking you to approve is higher because it's including the architect fees, and part of those things that are being set aside are for contingencies. However, I will say that on the advice of our Finance Committee, who we talked to about this last week, they advised us to hold back 200,000, and so we have agreed to do that, and we'll just keep that in our minds and be ready to deal with that if it comes up. Again, we're about sixteen to twenty weeks out, so, but we will set that money aside.
Okay, now, help me understand, I understand the thinking of the committee. Help me to understand, you've got a contract that's 167,000 dollars, and you're saying set aside an additional, come up to 200,000 dollars. How, in terms of bookkeeping, how do you, how do you write that? How do you put that into a budget?
As soon as the remainder of the S or two funds get released, which there's some chatter this week on the listserv about when that's going to happen, we will amend our application to expend the remainder of those funds, and I will change the allocation for that elevator project to 200,000. So that sets aside that amount in the grant, and we can spend up to that amount and be reimbursed through the grant.
And my last question, and I understand, so with that being said, would it be, in terms of the contract, would it be not to, would it be better if we put a contract together that said not to exceed 200,000 dollars as opposed to the defined number that you have, and then you had, you know, you have to reapply?
It would be difficult for us to put the stipulation not to exceed, using your example, if they began the work and a wall collapsed, and the, and we were forced to repair the wall and it exceeded that 200,000. We can't really walk away from a project midstream once we've already started tearing it apart. But, the good news about the S or two and the S or three grants is, they're going to continue to run for another year, meaning that as this project completes, if we did not spend the full 200,000 that we'll set aside, we can continue to amend that to reallocate those funds to where they will be needed. And so, if something were to be occurring that made it look like it would go over, then we, as an administrative team, would sit down strategically and decide what we need to do to include those in the funds. There's no barrier to amending that grant as many times as we need to, and many districts will be facing that, because we're all entering into the unknown realm of construction during a pandemic. So, overall, we're noting that costs are coming in at about fifty percent higher or more, and we're being told there's material shortages, manpower shortages, that's why we're sixteen to twenty weeks out. So we know there are some unknowns there, and we're keeping our eyes on that, and we're very cognizant of it. We will make the change to the 200, just to cover any unknown or unexpected experiences. If it becomes apparent that that's changing, we'll amend again and decide where we can, you know, pull from another project. It may mean that some projects get shelved, but the elevator is very important to the students in this building, and so we are going to proceed with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On that topic there, the price of the elevator was already above. We just bumped it to 200 to make sure it was beyond. So, it's already above the original quote price, we just wanna make sure we're beyond that price. That's why we put that cushion there for that 200 cap.
Help me understand what you're saying when you say-
Well, when the price of the elevator-
-the original quote was above the quote.
For the, she already put a buffer in there with the original price, was it 116?
The initial proposal that the elevator company submitted was for about 146, but included in that has to be the architecture fees, and they billed in a contingency fee for unrealized expenses. It was about ten percent, as memory serves.
Fourteen, fourteen thousand.
So, we're gonna add another bucket of that for just-in-case expenses at the recommendation-
No, I understand that, I'm just saying was, the original, when you said, we need, we need to replace this elevator, we gonna think the budget is gonna be 140,000 dollars. I have to do, what I have to do is what I call an ICE. Estimated Cost Analysis.
Correct.
You know, independent cost estimates. And so, so that's why, you know, I was trying to understand what you meant, that the original, the original bid was more than what we had, so that's what I was trying, you know, I understand the setting, you know, the money, but I-
147 to 169, to 169 to 200, that's what we did. So, they already put the cost analysis of 169 to 147 cost. Myself, Mr. Monk said, you know what, let's be realistic, it's gonna probably be more than that, so just make sure we budget for 200,000 dollars taken off money. And that's, just letting you know that we spoke about that-
Yeah.
-and we went above and beyond what was estimated.
Yeah, I understood, yeah. But we, with the, the way that this money, where this pool of money is projected to be coming from, we have the flexibility and latitude to, if we need less, that's cool, if we need more, we've got it, but, you know, it's balancing the equation. You take from this side, you gotta take from that side, or if you had to this side, so, this grant gives us that kind of flexibility.
It does, it does.
Okay. I'm done, sorry about that. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call or roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Torino?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, Item 8C, Karn Center Lease Agreement.
I'll take this one. Now, pull my mask off so you can understand me when I speak, and I'll ask Ms. Potter to fill in if there's some places that I need some information. So, we've been talking about the Karn's lease agreement for probably the entire time I've been here as superintendent. It's been, it's been one of those pieces and parts of our district as part of our history, and unfortunately, we just haven't been able to bring it up to and use it the way it was originally intended to use. So, the most recently, at least for the past year, it has been sitting empty, and we haven't been using it at all. We've secured it, we secured the parking lot, kids were still outside playing on the basketball courts because those were still open, but the building itself was not used at all. So, back in January, we had a meeting about the Karn Center. The mayor was there, Don Johnson, Mrs. Potter, and I were there, and Earl, I have you on my list as well, but I don't remember you being there, so I probably talked to you about that meeting. So, we just had a conversation about the Karn Center and what it would look like as we move forward in terminating our lease. After talking with the Board and with the people from the city, it was just decided that frankly, the city would have more opportunities than the school district would in getting people in to utilize Karns, and at the time, the options were the YMCA, Advancing Macomb, and frankly, the library. They had contacted me when, with the demolition at the library and using Karns to store books and have it as a satellite library source, which, which didn't happen. So, at the regular board meeting on February 17th, the district requested, directed that we breach, go into negotiations with the city in terms of termination of our lease and what it would mean for us, for the district, what it would mean for the city. And to be honest, I'm looking at it more of, instead of a termination, it's really a transition. It's a transition from the district overseeing everything that goes on at Karns with our limited staff, and transitioning that over to the city. The cost for us to maintain Karns all by itself, not opened, is about 25,000 dollars a year, when you count in our custodial, going back and forth. We checked it two to three times a week to make sure that everything was okay, and we just couldn't abandon the building. The maintenance, we had money set aside for snow removal, which we didn't use as much as we thought we would this year. We did not get much snow. But, we also encumbered money in terms of lawn care, repairs and maintenance, the alarm system, and natural gas and electricity. So, all that, it was in the range of about 25,000 dollars a year, and nobody was using the facility. So, we're looking at a transition right now, it began of July 31st being the last day that the school district will have a handle in anything that's happening at Karns, and so effective August 1st, the city will take over Karn Center. It'll transition completely to them, including insurance and utilities. Will all be switched over by August 1st. In surrendering the premises, part of the lease agreement was that it had to be, that normal wear and tear, we were responsible for covering. So, the building itself is in really good shape. I was just there Friday for the Boys and Girls Club Pistons piece, and it really, the inside, the interior of the building's in great shape. There were about sixty-five kids there, a bunch of adults, and it was really well-run, and the space itself was inviting, it was clean. I know that Robin and Willie really worked hard to bring it up to space because it really needed a good cleaning come this last spring, and our guys spent a lot of time in there, and they did a great job. The piece that is, that is our responsibility is the parking lot repair, and the estimate, an estimate on the parking lot repair is 160. That was an estimate that was created by the city. There has not been an RFP for the parking lot repair, but we have requested in our transition from this district to the city that it not exceed 160,000, and we will have a final say in who will be doing the parking lot repair, because we will be paying for it. The, we'll cover that, but the pieces that's important for us to know is that it will be payable over five years, and there will be no interest charged. So, we'll be responsible for a payment every five years, divided whatever the cost is by the five years, and that payment will be due in November of each year, because that's when our state aid money starts coming in at the end of October. So, right now, the Boys and Girls Club are taking over the space. I'm pretty excited about them being part of the district, or part of Karn- I'm pretty excited about them being part of the district, or part of Karnes, but actually on top of that, being part of the district as well. I think that we can have a pretty good collaborative partnership with them, either in terms of Karnes, but also at Seminole and at the high school, bringing programs into our schools. They ran that Pistons camp last week. There were over 60 kids a day there. They started at 8:30 in the morning, ran straight through to 3:00. The kids had breakfast and lunch. There were STEM, there was a basketball program that was really fun. And there were STEM programs for the kids and bounce houses and just things like that to bring in some fun. There was a free book giveaway, and I made a connection with the group that gave away over 600 books to the kids that came in there. And I'm actually meeting with him on Fridays, on Friday, to see about a collaboration that we can do with bringing more books in, but also looking at having them come in and reading with the kids. Kind of a book buddy program. Probably at Seminole before school, we could do possibly an early bus. And here, maybe a later afternoon. So I believe that this is what we need to do. It's the best for the district, and it's the best for the kids. And I'm open to questions.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
So it's over five years, and I see it's, I'm looking at it now, it's 32.
32.
Yeah, and it won't exceed that, so.
Every November.
Every November, yes.
I have a question. So you said that we will be the ones to determine the bid on the parking lot. That is not worded in this lease. It just says that we will reimburse up to $160,000. Can we add some kind of verbiage to this lease or request the verbiage be put in that we will be deciding on the RFP? So it's, I mean, obviously, they can't spend our money, we have to pay them.
Right.
But we, you said we're going to have a say in that. Where, it doesn't say anywhere in the lease that we do have a say in that.
Okay, I don't know. Barb, maybe you have some additional? Did you hear, did you hear the question?
Did she, I was trying to read her lips. Did she, did you ask if there's language that stipulates that we will have control over the RFP process?
Correct.
I am not familiar with, I don't remember seeing language to that in, in the contract itself, so I'm assuming that was a verbal agreement you had with the city?
Yeah, it was a verbal agreement I had with Don Johnson.
Yep. So if you want to have that added, I can contact our law firm and ask them to add that. It may slow them up a little because they're going to present this for the city council to approve. And they knew it would be a little bit late, and they said it would still be an August 1 date. They just needed, because we changed the language to say not to exceed $160,000. And, and we asked, they wanted us to make the payments in September when we don't receive any state aid, and so we asked to move it back to November. He didn't think it would be a problem. They actually had already approved the other language, so he's taking it back.
Let's see what we can do, and we'll get back to you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're able to see the bids that are coming in.
We would be able to see the bids. I do not believe that we might-
I think we could get an addendum even.
Yeah, we could do an addendum. Yep, good point.
He says, "We, we're approving the bids, all right? Is that what it is, or are we seeing the bids?"
Well, my understanding is we would be approving those bids because we're paying for it. But that was a verbal agreement. That was Don Johnson and I on the phone. So let's make sure that that would be an addendum to the contract.
Yeah, I'm with Ms. Collins. I want to see that language.
That not just, will we be responsible for the RFP process? As opposed to just looking at the bids and determining who we want to go with? Are we saying we are responsible for the whole process?
Right, as we are speaking right now, the city is responsible for the RFP process.
I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at bullet four. And it says, "Lease shall reimburse leasing for the costs involving the replacement of properties existing in parking lots. Said costs to not to exceed the sum of $160,000 and to be payable in five annual payments." I'm reading this contract. Do we want to get into the RFP? Do y'all have time to do the RFP for a parking lot? You know, what I'm saying is that-
We don't.
The contract said the city cannot go over, if not, if the city want to get somebody who wants to do it for $180,000, let them have at it. Because we're responsible for 160,000. That's what the contract says. So if they want to do 180, 190, they want to put out, if they want to put green carpet out there, let them do it.
So I had-
But we're responsible for 160, yeah, 160,000.
Right, I had a conversation with Robin Samuel in regards to this and the 160, and he had a bid on, he had someone come out and give him a price on that parking lot, and it was $140,000, and that was eight months ago. And as we have just previously been discussing, every, all of the prices have gone up. As a matter of fact, the city is only, what they're going to do right now is patch it to make sure it's safe, and they aren't even going to go out for bids until next fall, or next, next year.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I just, I think, me personally, I think we're covered because we're saying, I mean, if we sign this contract, it's saying that we are not liable for anything over 160,000.
I would just like to be able to have eyes on the RFPs to make sure that we're not paying outside of the scope of that parking lot. We should diligently be looking at that and saying, "Wait a minute, we're not paying, that's not what we agreed to." We should be able to look at what that bid is going to entail to ensure that it is strictly for the parking lot.
Yes, and, and I was assured by Don Johnson that that would be the case. But we can get that in.
The lease, I mean, the, the contract says that, existing parking lot. So we're not committing ourselves to anything else but the parking lot.
Right.
I'm more curious because a parking lot could include approach, and it could include sidewalks, it could include, you know, there's a lot of things that it could include with the right ways.
Parking lots don't include sidewalks.
Right, and, and there's nothing wrong with the approach.
Okay.
Another thing that I just wanted to point out is because the city is going to pay for this upfront and allow us to reimburse them over five years, I think that by law, they will have to put the heart, you know. It's their money that will be expended at the beginning.
I'm just bringing that up because do you guys have time to do, go out for RFP for a parking lot? I mean, I'm just-
I just want to know what, what, what-
In my spare time.
Right, you know what I'm saying?
That's not in your contract, spare time.
Well, that's true. We have talked about that.
And the approach, Ms. Collins, the approach is concrete. The parking lot is asphalt. That's where the problem is.
I'm, I'm still with Ms. Collins in a way. If you've got something in a verbal agreement, I want to see it in writing. So if he gave you a verbal agreement, just have it written down somewhere. Because verbal agreements, as we know in the past, they don't hold up to a glass of water. So if he said it, get it in writing, or tape them. It doesn't matter to me how, how it's recorded. As long as there's some type of recording that we can see, we can go back on, I'm okay with it.
Let me ask this. This contract, this contract has to be, or will be, or has been presented to the city council, city commission?
Yes.
The, the contract that was already approved did not have the language "not to exceed"
Okay.
Or the word "November", it had the word "September".
So they have to go back and re-approve it anyway?
They're going to go back and re-approve that.
So, and that, their meeting is what, the first and third Monday?
Correct, right.
So-
Their meeting is the second.
They said it would be the third, but the contract could still go into effect on-
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to see if we have time before that meeting to put that language in here. That, you know, in terms of that we need, you know, we want to have the ability to look at the RFP, or look at the bids, or whatever, whatever. But we need to be sure what it is we're putting in there. Are we, are we wanting, do we want to look at the RFPs? Or do we want to look at the bids? Or do we want to look at the scope of work? I'm just trying to, you know, be clear on what it is that we're, that we're asking to put, to add, to amend
Right.
in this, in this proposed contract.
My recommendation would be that I follow up with legal to ask the question of whether Mr. Monk is right. Because the language says specifically parking lot and not to exceed, are we covered by that? Or do we need to add an addendum or additional language?
No, I'm not talking about the "not to exceed", I'm talking about what Ms. Collins brought up.
To see that, to see the RFP, do we need to have that language added?
You know, what, how, you know, do we have control of who is hiring? Looking at the RFP is just looking at the RFP, or looking at the bids, or just looking at the bids. That doesn't necessarily mean that I'm controlling who gets the job. You know, I'm voting on, so that's all I'm trying to figure out. What are we, what are we saying? That we want the district to be the hiring entity?
No.
No, no.
No.
But I'm saying, if you don't want us to be the hiring entity, why do we need to see the RFPs? Why do we need to see the bids? Because it's just, it's just information. And if we're not making, if we're not the decision maker on it, I just, you know, I'm just-
I don't think it's important to be the decision maker at all. That's up to the city. What I want to see is that if we're spending district money, that we are spending it within the scope of solely the parking lot, and it's not exceeding that, I think that, that we have a responsibility to do that.
Well, I understand that because that's in the lease. That's in the language of the contract, parking lot not to exceed. But I'm trying to understand what role you want the district to play in reviewing, or analyzing, or determining what's the best bid.
I just want to make sure they're not calling us and saying, "Okay, the parking lot was $160,000, and we cut a check", when we don't know if the parking lot solely costs $160,000.
They, they cut the initial check. We reimburse them over five years.
Right. And, and Ms. Collins, we will see that. The city will be bidding more than just this parking lot, which is why there will be, it'll be less because of the scope of all of the work by, by doing, by doing several parking lots instead of just cars. Yes, it'll be a volume, it'll be a volume piece. We will make sure that everything, that everything that we're paying for is just the parking lot. And if it isn't, we have this agreement that we can go back to them, and we'll bring that up to legal. Barb, do you have something to add?
We would not cut a check just for an invoice. They will have to attach their invoice to it to show us the scope of the work. They can't just send me a copy of the contract and say, you know, "Pay me $37,000 this year." I would reject that and say, "You need to send me a copy of what you paid out so that I can see that it's kosher." So we would do that automatically in the business office as a function of accounts payment.
You're missing, I think everybody's missing what I'm getting at. I'm, I'm just trying to see, what language do you want to put in here? What role do you want the district to play? That's all I'm trying to, to narrow, you know, pinpoint because we have to decide on this contract, and the city commission has to decide on this contract. So since we're the ones who's modifying the contract, I'm just trying to understand for my benefit what it is that you're trying to obligate the district to that's not in the current contract.
Can I ask a question real quick? You said that Robin, Ms. Potter, you said that Robin, Robin put together a cost analysis. How long ago was that?
Robin told me it was about eight months ago.
So eight months ago was about $140,000, $145,000? So, $145,000.
Add 80 to that.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying. $145,000, eight months ago, with the current, which, which everything is going up. But we have a contract here that says 160,000, so we're literally looking at 15,000. Literally, that we're, more than we will be on the hook for. But we're, I mean, we're, we're going to say, if, if it goes through, we'll say, we're, yes, we agree to be on the hook for 160,000. You can't exceed that, can't go beyond that.
Right.
So I'm thinking that it's actually going to go up. It may be more than 160,000.
It will be more.
That's what I'm thinking. It's going to be more, but our, this contract says we are only on the hook for 160,000.
Yes.
Period.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree with you guys, you know what I'm saying, seeing, you know, but, no, but I understand what you're saying, but, because then, that kind of, I mean, do you want to get into that? Then it gets in, then the city commission was, you know, we, to me, I want this to get away from us. Let's get it off our books, you know what I'm saying? And I'm, you know, I'm thinking 15,000 from eight months ago, but I, me just, I mean, I'm not a construction guy. I ain't going to sit up here and pretend I'm a construction guy, but I'm a business guy. I just know all my costs is going up in my business that I own, so, and they've gone up astronomically, so.
And I'm just, what language are you putting, you want to put into the, into this proposed contract? And what responsibility, or, yeah, what responsibility are you asking the district to play a role in by modifying, you know, changing the lease? I, you know, that, that's all, that's all I'm trying to understand from my narrow thinking is, okay, what responsibility, what role are, do you want the district to play? You don't, you don't want us to develop the RFP, but you want to look, you want to look at the bids, or you want to look at the quotes? Do, we're looking at the quotes, do we decide who, who gets the contract? So that's what I'm trying to understand. What responsibility are you, are you asking to change for the board?
I just want to make sure we're not paying for anything outside of the scope of the parking lot. No drainage, no grading, no, none of that, just the parking lot. There's a lot that is entailed with just pouring parking lot. And there's more that comes along with it.
That, that's part of the, of the process, the drain, and putting in the drain, drain tiles, all that stuff. That's part of putting in the parking lot. This is not just laying concrete. It's, it's removing, replacing.
Placing, doubling, double slabs.
So whatever it takes to, you know, to put it back correctly, that, that's already entailed. And the way I'm looking at it, that's already in the contract. And I'm not, you know, not being argumentative. I'm just trying, what is it that you're changing? What responsibility are you, you know, want, are you wanting the district to have in the process? That's, that's all I'm trying to, for my own sanity.
It, it could even be a simple amendment, addendum that, you know, the district will receive the bid chosen by the city council for review. It could be something simple, it's just for review.
Now, you got to understand, you got two bodies that have to agree to this. You know, you could be, I'm playing devil's advocate, I'm the city commission. Well, why does a board want to review the decisions that I'm making when I'm helping the board out by taking this project on?
That's kind of my thought process.
That, that, that's, you know, that, that's, you know, million dollar question.
Well, I'm going to play devil's advocate, I'm going to jump on Jamie's side over here. We're not, we're not making a decision.
But I'm just saying, what, what is, what language do you want? And what responsibility and role do you want the district to have? That, that, that's, that's the same question I've been asking.
And, and, and in some way, if we decide to put a language in there saying that we want to review a RFP or approved bid from the city, we are making a decision to approve whatever happens to that parking lot.
This is what going to happen. The city is going to put RFPs out for, for concrete. They're going to put, how many linear feet is going to include Karnes Center?
Karnes Center, another, another parking lot.
It could be your whole side of town, where they've gone through, inspected, and say that this, this concrete has to be replaced. So they got, you know, for the sake of the contract, a million cubic feet of concrete that they're putting out for bid. I just want to say, what role and responsibility, because they're putting this big bid out, not just the bid for the parking lot at Karnes Center. So what role, what responsibility with this, with amendment to this contract are you want to put on the district?
Gracie, what language?
No, what role, what responsibility with the language you want to put, that you want to put, what responsibility you want to put on, on the district? Or what role do you want us to play in a decision that they make, that the city commission will make in terms of who they go with?
I'm not hearing her saying she wants to make the decision. I'm hearing she just wants something for checks and balances. That's all I'm hearing. Is that what you want? Checks and balances?
If you amend the contract, that puts the district in a, in another position to do something. If it's to review, to analyze, to determine, and interpret. I'm just trying to understand what it is because if you change the language, you're putting a responsibility on the district that's bigger than just the parking lot because this is going to be part of a bigger bid process.
This is still going to be the responsibility of the district next year when they do this because we are paying for it.
I understand that. The, the payment is the responsibility of the, of the district, and that's in the contract. I'm trying to say, with this language that you want to change, what role and what responsibility and what function are you wanting to put the board, the district in?
I want to see a detailed bid that they agree on with whatever contractor they go with, specific to Karnes. I don't want it to be, they're going to do 1 million cubic feet, and we're going to guesstimate how much Karnes is going to be because we're paying for it. I want to see detailed information specific to Karnes.
You can get that without amending this contract. You can get that without amending this contract.
Before that.
So, before, again, I, I just wanna repeat what Mrs. Potter had said. Before we send a check to the city, we will have a detailed bill from the city explicitly stating what every bit of that money is for. Or we don't pay that bill. I mean, that's the, that's the process that we go through in this business office. We just don't hand money over. Yes.
I'm not a lawyer and I'm not giving out pretend legal advice. However, I do think that President Rickman makes a very strong point. If we change the language in the contract, we could potentially be creating an unseen liability for us moving forward in the future. And Mr. Monk is also correct. If eight months ago Robin talked to a contractor who said, I would charge you about a hundred and forty-five thousand, that's the baseline bid. You gotta add to that bylaw, the architect oversight. You have to add the contingencies and the other costs, which would probably bring it to the one sixty-five. So, to, to lock us in at one sixty-five right now is a, is a bargain. And, um, and I, you know, you can give me and the business office a directive that you want to review the bill before we pay it and I'll be happy to show you what we receive. And we can continue to request more documentation from the city before we approve and cut the check. Um, I'm happy to reach out to Trune and talk to Attorney Clark and ask these questions if the board is interested. But I do believe that these are very valid points that Mr. Monk and President Rickman have pointed out. And if we add even more language, we're adding responsibility to the district. You can't say, I want to, but I don't wanna be held responsible. And if we tell them, we want them to RFP it specifically for Karns, we lose the discount by the volume. And it will be higher than one sixty-five without a doubt. I truly do believe that. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Ms. Monk?
I'm thinking about all this and I, I, I think this could be a libel solution. I get what you guys are saying. So, because this is, goes through our normal committee workshop to the board process. Before the finance, finance department cuts a check, it comes to the finance committee for review. Then it comes to the work, then it comes to the
Work session.
Work session for review. That way, we all can view that, that scope of work that the city did and that thirty-two thousand dollars before we cut that check. And that's all doing normal process of our monthly yearly day business. That way, we all can see what's going on. Because we're, we're making five payments. It ain't like this, you know? So, we'll see in every stage, before we cut a check, we'll see what they've done, what was done and what we're paying for.
And that's exactly what I wanna see.
So, that, so, with that being said, I don't think that needs to be changed. The contract doesn't need to be changed because we can still bring that through our normal process.
That's part of your own business.
Yeah.
And Ms. Collins, I'll promise you, Mr. Monk and I,
Oh, yeah.
and Ms. Potter, no, we'll be on her head at those committee meetings.
For real.
She can handle it.
Chair, we're gonna change the motion relative to agenda item eight C, Karn lease agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk. Support. I'll go with Mr. Reno on that. Any questions, comments, concerns about the motion on the floor? The motion on the floor is to approve the proposed contract as presented.
I just wanna make a comment. I wanna thank Superintendent and Ms. Potter for your hard work on this. It's been a long, long, it has taken up almost, almost all your superintendency.
It's been a long
And your, uh, assistant superintendency. So, thank you both for getting us to this point. It ain't done yet, but thank you both for getting us to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Additional questions, comments, concerns? You hear me saying none? Call the board, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Doc McFen?
Yes.
Ms. Potter?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, item nine. These are information items. Any additional information coming out, uh, from the business committee or any, not any question? Are there any questions regarding the financial reports? Any questions regarding the open purchase order listings? Any questions regarding the contract listings? Any questions regarding the facilities listings?
Ms. Potter? Was that piece added to the facilities listing that we talked about at the committee?
It was.
Thank you much.
And, and the contracts were also updated, so those changes have already been put into play.
Okay, since you brought it up.
That's how, that's how you open up a can of worms. You see that?
Doc, I was trapped right out.
Product changes, you know, with the sun.
I was just, they were just adding something back to the facility listing, which was the, the pool maintenance, which was added to it.
Yeah, adding something back to the list and also, um, going forward, the board will see and us also public, we will highlight which, which projects will be started with S two and which ones will be ended with S three.
Yeah, that's all.
That's it.
And that, that would be in the board package.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Seeing you're hearing none, down to item ten, superintendent's comments.
I only have four pages, so this'll go quick.
No problem. No problem.
So, first of all, I'd like to welcome Jake Reno to the board. And you'll be a wonderful addition, so we're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
So, there's lots of things that are coming up. You think it's summer and we're slowing down, but we're not. So, on August third, which is a Tuesday night, we, um, we're inviting all the clergy in Mount Clemens. Mr. Monk, it was your idea and, um, I, I hope we get, I hope we get a big turnout. So, we've invited all of the clergy in Mount Clemens to a roundtable discussion, real talk regarding the growing of our school district and our student community. We're gonna meet right here in the media center, uh, at the secondary campus. The meeting will begin at six o'clock and I'm inviting all of you to come. Um, and if you let me know, because we are gonna have a, a little meal. So, if you let me know, so I can, um, talk to food service about how much to prepare. But what we're asking for are ideas, expertise and ways that we can support each other. When I think about our community, one of the best ways to meet and talk to the parents and the people in our community is through the church. And, um, so I'm hoping that maybe this can make a difference. Um, we will have, again, I said, we'll have a light supper. And what we're looking at are ways that they can help support us and that we can support them in their work as well. They're doing all kinds of things in the community. What ways can we as a school district help with that? Or maybe reach out to some of our families that may not have that or know about that access. Summer school is going really well. Um, the kids are excited. I've been getting, well, Mrs. Monk's kids
Oh, my God.
are, um, well, they're practicing different, it's a kind of a life skills class, which frankly, we all could use. And so, I've been getting emails from all of them thanking me for, um, the field trips that they've been getting to go on. And they've all been, uh, so there's a definite format that they're following, but she's really teaching them how to send emails. But they're also going on field trips and they're going places and they're getting out into the world, which is really important. The, um, credit recovery too is in full swing. Our kindergarten classes are full. So, we have a kind of a pre-kindergarten class for the kids that are coming over from King Academy. And we have two full classes of kindergartners, so we're excited about that. I'm very excited and the kids are just adorable. I was there for breakfast yesterday, so. Um, the first four-week session ends tomorrow and we begin session two, um, next Monday. And that will go through Thursday, August nineteenth. It's really going well and I just want to publicly state that Emily Holt and Melissa Mada, who have taken on the responsibility of summer school, are amazing. They're, they just are amazing. They're doing a great job. Um, they've really truly stepped into their roles as principals and they've created a real happy place for kids. We're beginning to, um, plan for the return of our teachers and our students. The professional learning of August, um, thirty-first and September first are underway. That's the two days before school starts that we have the teachers as a captive audience. And, um, we, um, have a lot of, I hope, fun things planned, but also a lot of learning for them as well. Seminole is planning a return to school for kids and parents on September first. So, this is from five-thirty to seven-thirty in the evening for kids and parents to meet their teachers, find out where their desks are and see their old friends, um, before school starts. Uh, we'll incorporate a lot of Title I information into this meeting as well. So, we'll be able to, um, cover the costs of some treats and snacks and, um, things for the kids to take home. During summer school and into the fall, we, when we return to face-to-face learning, we will continue to wear masks. I'm gonna repeat that. We will continue to wear masks. Most of our students are not eligible to be vaccinated at this time. The COVID Delta variant is very, very contagious and it's affecting younger adults, young adolescents and children. Our students that right now have faced huge inequities during our time of online learning. And no one wants to repeat that experience and learning loss for our kids. So, masks will be a necessity at this time because it's just important that kids are here. And if they've got a mask on, they're gonna be safe. Students and staff will mask, will wear masks while indoors at school. Again, we're urging everyone possible to get vaccinated for their safety and for the safety of our kids. But we understand if, if you can't and don't, but we will be requiring you to wear masks. They also prevent the spread of colds and flus and all those respiratory illnesses that really knock kids out. I just, I mean, I wasn't sick a minute this winter. I don't know about the rest of you because I had a mask on all the time. There have been no incidents of COVID transmission from during our summer school time and masks are helping with that. Kids are wearing masks, so are teachers. I think that the pandemic, the pandemic of the last eighteen months has taught us how important it is to be physically together, especially for our students, for our kids and for our adolescents. It's really wonderful to see our kids back. I love it. And the cafeteria at Seminole for breakfast, it was a fun space. The, the kids were just fun and adorable. And the hallways and the classrooms here at secondary are full of laughter and smiling students and kids and they're all wearing masks. There will be no outdoor mask requirements because outdoors, we're fine. But masks will be worn on the buses. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Item eleven, committee reports. Any additional information coming out of the business finance committee?
There is none.
Any questions other chair? Sir, Mr. Lennon Barrett. I'm gonna give you a double hitter.
I actually do.
All right.
After a year of no coalition reports, I actually have one. We're having a meeting.
Ah, dude!
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's a big deal. It's been over a year. Uh, Wednesday, August twenty-fifth, we'll be in here at three o'clock. We're having a, we're, we're gonna reset goals for the coalition, what we wanna do. We wanna make sure we get our volunteers back and we're always welcome to have new members coming in. So, uh, we're gonna be doing that. Um, we are still planning to have our Drug Takeback Day in October, which is on the national one. It's usually the second, the, the third Saturday, I believe, or third or fourth Saturday of October, we'll be doing our Drug Takeback Day. And if you haven't heard already, I'm the new co-chair of the Santa Claus Parade. So, if anybody wants to volunteer and be a part of the Santa Claus Parade, let me know. Because I have so much free time that, you know, we'll wind out a parade too, right? So, yeah, I'm doing that too. So, I will look for hope from Seminole. I want everybody to be a participant. If you wanna be a part of the parade, please let me know how you wanna help out. We need floats, we need people, we need volunteers. Cash is always good too. We'll take anything. It's all for Santa, so it's all for our kids and it's a good time. So, that is what I have. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. I told you, you have to double hit it.
Uh-oh.
Any information on the educational foundation?
No, we, uh, we have not met since graduation. We did the, uh, ten scholarships. So, as of right now, I believe our funds are, are, yeah, we have a couple. Not, not a lot at this point, so we'll be looking to revamp that program as well.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any additional information, curriculum personnel?
No, there's, there, I don't think there is anything to add.
Any new exciting things happening in the world of policy, either Mr. Monk or Ms. Collins?
Uh, no, nothing new. Um,
I'm shocked.
We just came off of a, we just came off of a huge packet. So, literally, I don't see any meeting until October unless something come up where we'll be meeting with Mr., our new representative, Mr. Wayne Wright.
Wayne Wright, yeah.
Um, superintendent said that her and Paul met with him today. So, um, unless something is pressing, we probably won't meet until then because that's when our next big policy packet
I was just gonna say the packet, the packet will be here September tenth.
Yeah, so will, yeah, so.
Thank you. Legislative, but I've not had one, so. The last time I sent information out to this superintendent's had anything on the promise of money?
Um, yes, um, so we are, um, they're bringing everyone up to eighty-seven hundred, so that's a hundred and seventy-one dollars a student, um, for us. We had already budgeted fifty though, so it's really a hundred and twenty-one dollars per student added to our budget. Uh, in addition, GSRP, um, their funding has also been increased to eighty-seven hundred. And, um, and there's also a part-time, which is less than, I, I'll make sure I do have my notes if you need that number. But, um, the, what they're, they've done is they've opened up more slots in GSRP as well. So, Melissa Lasik and I were at a Zoom meeting this morning, um, in regards to GSRP. So, um, we'll have some more information for you as well, but we are looking forward to expanding the program. We definitely have room at King for more classrooms and, um, and we have space for kids. And they've also expanded the number of students in Macomb County that will be eligible for the program. So, that's a really, really good news. And what's important for us to know is that it's good news, but we need to fill the slots this year because they, they, it looks like they will pull the funding next year if the slots aren't used. If that makes sense, you, you know, usually you get a year or two. Yep, use it or lose it. Usually you get a year or two to build a program. We need to build a program, so, um, Melissa knows that and the word needs to get out. And we need to knock on doors and get these four-year-olds into our GSRP program. And those are the kids that right now are at Seminole in the pre-kindergarten programs. So, that's the piece. Let's get them in, let's get them in our GSRP program and then bring them into kindergarten because we have some of the best kindergarten teachers I have ever seen.
Thank you. Which brings us to item twelve, board comments. I'm gonna start to my far right. Ms. O'Neil?
Um, welcome, Jacob.
Thank you.
And, uh, that's it. I don't have any other comments.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Ms. Collins?
I, I'm gonna do the same. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you.
And other than that, nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Reno?
I would like to thank the board, um, as today was my first meeting and I look forward to our future working together.
I'm gonna welcome Mr. Reno.
I only talk to myself when no one else is around.
Doc McFen?
Uh, well, welcome, Mr. Reno. That's my comments. That's it. Welcome, Mr. Reno. That's my comments.
Mr. Monk?
I'm gonna change it a little bit. Big up to Ms. Reno. Uh, welcome aboard. Uh, hope, uh, hope you, uh, bring all the skills and everything that you said you're gonna bring. So, we look forward to, uh, working with you.
Thank you.
Um, I also wanna give a big up to, uh, my wife, Ms. Monk. Um, I also wanna give a big up to, uh, my wife, Ms. Monk, and I, Superintendent alluded to this earlier. Um, she had a blast with the kids in summer school. She taught 'em how to sew hem, bake cookies, measure, a whole bunch of other light-skilled stuff. And, uh, unfortunately, I was the one that had to go shopping with her, so, but, you know, her putting all that, and she put it all together, but it sounded like summer school went really well in her class, so if it, and, and hopefully, everything else you alluded to, the rest of the summer school went, went really well. And, and we needed that. The kids needed it.
We need to add that class.
Yes, yes.
We're, we're working on that.
Yeah, I'm a firm believer, you know, sometimes it's not about math, science, and history, it's about, you know, what you can do on a day-to-day, uh, life going forward. Um, I just want everybody to, uh, my board members, uh, to enjoy the rest of your summer, because I am, I am going on a Western trip, so we're probably gonna hit about eight states, um, not that I'm out of my cast. Um, so wish everybody a good rest of the summer, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Ms. Walker?
Guess what I'm gonna say? Welcome, Jake, it's great to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Monk, congratulations on being our new secretary.
Thank you. This is my first time being a secretary. I just thought, I've been sitting here thinking about that. I've, I've never been secretary. I'm like, oh, okay.
Yep, well, congratulations, and everything's fun with Mrs. Monk. I'd have gone.
Oh, I know, right?
Yeah, but, and she, everything's fun with her. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Go ahead and say it, Mr. Rickman.
Double dare you, double dare you to say it.
Today is July the 21st, and it seems like we just got out of school, and a little more than a month, we're gonna be starting this whole thing right back up again. So I'd like to piggyback on comments of Mr. Monk, page to staff, you know? I know the summer has not been a great summer. What they say, I've heard from the weather a couple of days ago, for, in thirty-four days, it rained twenty-five, some parts, or all those days, so has not made it seem like a very enjoyable summer, but we still, you still got time to go out there and put the top down in the convertible and let the breeze blow through your hair. I know Patrick, yeah. Enjoy yourself, um, recharge and re-energize yourself and rejuvenate yourself, because before you know it, uh, we're gonna be right back at this process, um, and hopefully, prayerfully, fingers crossed, mask on, vaccinations in, that we can bring this whole thing back to some normalcy, um, this year, where we have, you know, successful person-in-person, uh, learning, teaching and learning sessions going on in the buildings of the Mount Clemens Community School, just, uh, for, for our students. There will be a need for the Board to have a couple of special meetings and a couple workshops, and we need, one, one of the workshops or meeting, special meeting, will be, we need to know what the state of the district is. Um, we need to put everything on the line, all the data on the line, and let the data drive us into decisions we need to make. Um, we need, I believe, we need to have a strategic planning, uh, meet, meeting, uh, meetings possibly, uh, to determine, uh, where this district is going over the next two or three years. We have Ms. Beals for two years, so we need to take full advantage of, of, of her strengths that she brings to the district, so we can not only be successful, uh, in the two years that she's with us, but we can put together a blueprint of how we move, and, I don't, let me rephrase that, I'm not meaning the blueprint. We can put together a plan, a direction that, that we, that we go in, uh, in, into the future, so, um, just start looking at your calendars. Um, I would think, the sooner we can start doing some of these things, the, the better, the better we'll, the, the better we'll, we'll, we'll be off, um, in, in providing those types of activities for this Board to, you know, set the direction, uh, for the district. Uh, let's see. I ain't had this written down, but I don't know if you, you, everybody's welcoming you today, and you're thankful for all this. I don't know after all these meetings you have, if you're gonna be, man, I don't know how welcome I feel, so. You know, this is a whole different bargain. Nobody's smiling at this session that they did at the others' meeting. You know, so, it's just, uh, yeah, but welcome, welcome to, to the team. Um, you're one of seven, one of eight, uh, sits around this board table, and, um, uh, we, we set the direction of, of the district. The buck, the buck stops with us, so welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, those are my, those are my comments. Share with entertaining motion. Entertaining motion, good journey.
Salute.
Move, quickly move. I'm Mr. Monk.
I ain't changing.
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Call the Board.
Yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Knocking in the jury.